Good evening. We'll call to, call to order the city commission meeting for October 16, 2017. First on our agenda would be roll call.
Mayor Beans?
Present.
Commissioner Locke?
Here.
Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Present.
All right, thank you. Next would be invocation. Don't see Mr. Alliance. Chase, would you lead us?
Yep, if you all pray with me. Lord heavenly father, we just thank you for this time that we can come together as a commission and as a community. We pray your blessing on this meeting as we try to make the best decisions that affect our community as a whole and to move us in a direction that keeps moving us forward. Lord, we pray for our community, we pray for our state, we pray for our country and world. We lift up the men and women who continue to serve our country. We just pray your blessings on them and their families tonight. Lord, we just lift this all up in your son Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Thank you. Join me for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with a liberty and justice in its heart.
Personal appearances, anybody wish, we don't have any personal appearances. We'll move on to public comment. Anybody wish to address the commission right now on items not on our agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. There are items on your consent agenda. Everybody's had this sent to us earlier, I guess Friday of last week. Any questions or comments from the commission on the consent agenda?
I do have one comment, Mr. Mayor. The CMB license for the Broncos, I know that last meeting you approved a resolution for a liquor license for them. They mixed up, they don't want the liquor license, they just want a cereal beverage license. And so where that other resolution will just go away and we'll just approve them for a cereal malt beverage license.
This is for a one-time event, right?
Yeah, for a one-time event.
It's not for serving beer at the stadium?
Right. Just, just for their event, that they're having a number of 70s.
Okay. There are no comments, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the consent agenda as of, as presented be approved.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second, no further comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Pardon me, we'll move on to old business, which is, we, last meeting we had a public hearing and several questions and discussion, lots of good discussion about the paving of Marmanton Road. I think before we, we will continue, I, I said last time that that was our opportunity for public hearing. I, we were mistaken, we'll continue this public hearing and you'll get a chance to speak again after hearing some more information today. But before we open for public hearing, I would like, Scott, if you can, kind of give us an overview of the project and see if some of the comments and concerns expressed last week or two weeks ago.
Sure, and I apologize for not being able to attend. What we're looking at tonight is, is having the commission consider a resolution on the advisability of improving Marmanton Road from Sixth Avenue South to Second Avenue and Diagonal Road from the intersection of Second Avenue to Third Avenue. On this map here, you see shaded in blue are the streets that have been improved since this area was annexed into the city in 2000. The yellow roads are the remaining roads that are, still need of improvement. Here is a drawing of the improvement district map. These are the folks with the circles. These are their properties of folks that are included in the improvement district. The green line here will be the improvements to Marmanton. Of course, we'll jump across Third Avenue, that was approved a few years back. You'll see the improvement of Diagonal Road here to the intersection of Third Avenue along with a little construction of the intersection there of Diagonal. As always, the city at large pays for any drainage improvements on the road project, any of the intersection improvements. So Diagonal is right in there, one large intersection. So the city at large would be picking up those costs, as well as some of the drainage, which are the magenta colored boxes on here to help with some of the improvement. Few of the concerns I heard that came up were driveways and property owners will, will meet with each property owner as this project, if it progresses and when it progresses, will meet with each one of those homeowners, talk to them about their driveways, the size they want. They're, they're able to tell us how large or how small the driveway they want. Throughout the duration of construction, we will try by all means to keep access to everyone's home in the evening. Some, some days that might be difficult, but we're usually pretty successful in getting that done. And definitely if anyone within that improvement district has any special needs or issues, we will surely accommodate them. As, the only time they'll really be out of their driveways are, in the evenings, will be when the driveways appear poured and usually a cure period, we like to see at least four days before we let their vehicles be on those driveways. I heard mailboxes were brought up. Mailboxes will be placed in an area probably along Third Avenue and I'm looking down at Diagonal and Second, we haven't finalized that. A lot of that has to do with postmaster and his desires. I can tell you, a lot of times in the past, we're able to keep them up in front of the homes during construction and the postmen would deliver during, and other times we have not been able to do that. It's kind of up to the postmaster. I, I heard a comment about water meters. Anything utility-wise on this project will be relocated at either the utilities' expense or the city at large's expense. So water meters need to be moved, relocated, that, any of that sort of work would be done by the city of all our utilities department. I think that's what I heard with the, with the general comments. I'm open to definitely any more questions or...
A couple of questions that I have. One of the comments came up about the policy for assessing multiple streets to a property as it pertained, specifically here as it pertained to Diagonal Road. We've got some properties there that would, triangle shape, or those that share both the front and back to Diagonal Road and Marmanton. And then the future paving of Second Street. Can you, can you go through our policy for, for multiple street assessments to property owners?
Yeah, and on this project, when we have two roads, portions of, a portion of a road and a complete road, it's, it's probably more appropriate to talk in terms of projects instead of streets. So this benefit district is established, there are square footages for each one of those lots, and the, the heavier shaded line, like in this area, is where one home is on two lots.
Right.
So that's, that's the distinction there. So we look at, we estimate the cost to build Marmanton and that portion of Diagonal, so everything you see there in the green and blue. And then we divide that, well, first we take out what the city at large pays. We have a cost that we call the improvement district cost. We divide that cost over the entire square footage within that improvement district. So we come up with a cost per square foot. So everyone along there is paying the same cost per square foot as everyone else.
Okay.
So someone that lives on the corner of Marmanton and Diagonal isn't paying a higher cost than, than the folks north of there.
So it's per, you, I mean, saying it per project than per street is...
It's more appropriate.
Is it more appropriate?
Typically, it's just a street and a street, but...
In this case, it's got some oddities to it.
Yeah.
The question I have is, Diagonal isn't brought all the way to Second Street. Is, is there a reason for that? And then the follow-up question is, why would we do that odd-shaped intersection with Diagonal and Marmanton and just eliminate that and bring Second Street over for a 90-degree intersection?
We could do that, that is private property and we do not own that or have a rideaway there. Then you'd have a large kind of island where the existing rideaway is that would, that has pipelines.
Are there utilities, are there utilities in Diagonal Road right through there?
Yeah, so Diagonal Road itself, imagine why it was plotted in that manner, is Magellan Pipeline has three pipelines underneath it.
Right. What I was trying to do maybe even is if there is a way to make a swap between rideaway there and that triangle that's left to keep an island from being left out, and is there a way to, to talk to that property owner and see if there's a, I think, because I think the property owner owns both the island and that property across the street, I mean, if I remember right, as he was in.
That's correct.
Anyway, we're kind of getting into the weeds, whether there's a, and even approving that tonight doesn't preclude further discussion from that intersection, is that right?
Right.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the commission?
Will Sutherland's and the bank be assessed in this too to help pay for this?
They will not. Sutherland's was, will be in the improvement district for Second Avenue, they were in the improvement district for School Road.
Okay.
Everything, Marmanton Road as it goes south through Sutherland's property is on a street easement, okay? It's not a rideaway on Bed City already.
Kind of dead end into, dead ends into a parking lot, right?
Right. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Scott. At this point, we'll open up to public hearing. To continue the public hearing opened last, at our last meeting for the paving of Marmanton Road. Anybody from the audience wish to speak on the matter?
R Anderson, 635 Marmanton Road. Is this a, is this a 28 or a 31-foot road?
This will be a 31-foot wide road back to curb to back to curb.
Back to curb.
So this, the same thing that's on 31.
So a collector is 30, what's a collector?
Like Village Road? Village Road is 41 feet.
41 feet, okay. So sidewalks, we, we have to ask for sidewalks if we want them?
Yeah, if, if we can get, if there's more than 50% of the residents that would like a sidewalk, we could initiate a project for that.
Well, is that kind of like they have, you, you would have to get a petition and ask, I mean, you're not going to do them if it's not petitioned, right?
Right, unless the city commission says we want sidewalks.
Do you have done any site plans or anything on the road? I mean, can you tell us anything about the height of the road? Do you think it's going to have to go down or will it stay the same or...
Generally, I'll start, these projects are, are difficult because we have developed, a developed area, homes very close together with different levels of garage elevations and, and what have you. What we try to do is keep the same centerline grade of the road as, as we can. Now, the road's going to be a lot wider and have a lot more distinctive crown to it, so it may cut a little deeper into the yards. We know we have a, a low point, a sump in Marmanton there between Third and Sixth Avenue. We're going to have to do some pretty good drainage improvements too.
Yeah, yeah.
More or less the road, if you look at the road as it exists today, for the most part out there, they centered those roads on, on the center of the rideaway. So if someone wanted to kind of get an idea, we'd be happy to meet them out there. About 15 and a half foot from the center of the road would be where the back of curb's going to be generally.
Okay.
Now, there's a little meandering to those roads out there, but generally that's about where the back of curb will be. We will, we'll center the road in the center of the rideaway. So we won't have more road on the west side or east side requested.
Is this going to be one of those half-curb on our driveways?
It'll, it'll be what we call a stand-up typical curb, and then driveways will have a lay-down curb through them.
A little, a little stand-up where you got to drive?
Not, not like what you see in new subdivisions.
Yeah.
With the, this big bump.
Yeah.
Not like that.
Okay.
What we do on driveways is we'll have a, it'll be two inches higher at the back from the flow line of the curb up, which is pretty gentle.
If, if, if this thing doesn't go ahead, would there be any way, I, I'm going to put in a new driveway, would there be any way you could give me some approximate elevations?
Sure.
To go by, kind of?
If, if it doesn't go through, we'd show you where driveway, it'd still probably suggest staying a ways away, just because hitting that slope and elevation on your new driveway would be pretty difficult.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Gail Queen Shaw, and I'm the owner of 340 Diagonal. You've answered all the questions except on Diagonal, I just wonder if I'm going to be in the next, on Second Street? Will I also have that tax the next project?
If...
There's just three houses on Diagonal.
Were you part of Third Avenue? Do you recall if you had been there long enough? Okay. Then, then I, we would have to see, and I don't have my, we have kind of a master map out there involving improvement benefit districts laid out, so I couldn't tell you right now.
Okay. I think that was it. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
But she would only have to pay for two roads, like everybody else. Not pay for Diagonal plus Marmanton plus Second.
And I guess there's, pardon me, but that's two projects, two roads and two projects. Right now, you and I, we've got two roads, but we're calling them one project, is that right?
Right. I think this was...
So it's two projects versus two roads? Yeah, typically it would be two roads, but this has got an oddity to it because of Diagonal.
Right. And, and there's other circumstances where when we do Second Avenue, say there's a house on Huntley, and that half-distance line between Third Avenue and Second Avenue went right through the middle of his lot. So the north half of his lot paid for Third Avenue, the south half is going to pay for Second Avenue, and his whole lot's going to pay for Huntley. Okay, so it's just how we split them up, so...
Okay. Thank you. Any other, anybody else wish to speak on the matter? Okay, well, we'll close the public hearing and move on to discussion among the commissioners. Any questions or comments on the commission? Task in front of us is to, is to act on the improvements for Marmanton Road.
Resolution number, Tabitha?
2854.
2854?
Mm-hmm.
I move that resolution number 2854, a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements with the city of El Dorado, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, subject to protest, paving improvements Marmanton, project 510.
Second.
Commissioner Lewis, second.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Wilkinson, seconded by Commissioner Lewis, to approve the project. Any further comments? Discussion? Tabitha, is this roll call?
No. Resolution.
Resolution, thank you. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. We'll move to new business, bike path phase three.
Yes, good news. We've been trying for a number of years since the last phase of our bike path was completed to get some funding to extend the bike path. We were notified a few weeks back that we were awarded a project with the city of El Dorado. It's a very competitive program, very few dollars available to local communities. So what we are asking you tonight is to authorize the commission and the city manager to sign a programming request to go ahead and include this project in KDOT's programming. I've got some maps up here that will kind of show you the, the route.
You say put it in KDOT's programming, does that mean, what's that mean, to get in, to get in line to ask for funding, or is it funded?
To, to secure the funding and to say that we, we will have the funds available when we start spending dollars. So this is a project that KDOT will have to see to El Dorado. So when the project is all the way through and we've authorized bonds down the road and the project's been let and we have a contract in place with the contractor, the city of El Dorado writes a check to KDOT for our portion and sends it to them, and then they administer and make payments.
Okay, to the contractor.
Correct.
So it's been funded through KDOT, it's just a matter of, we're just approving the process to move forward with that.
We've been submitted and we've said, yes, we want this project, and yes, we will have the ability to have the funds.
Okay. Our portion of the funds.
Our portion of the funds. In, in the red here, you see the last phase of the bike path, which we call Phase Two. This Phase Three, what we coined as Part One, is in the yellow. It's three-quarters of a mile extension of the bike path along the Walnut River, north underneath the old Walnut River, crossing for the BNSF, through the Dog Park, and tying back into East Park here. An overview to remind, remind you all, kind of a vision. Now, none of these are set in stone, these are just ideas and thoughts. And from the beginning, when we were, first bike path was awarded in the late 90s and was to get it to the west side, get some connection throughout town. You see the Phase One, Part One here, we still see somehow a path going out west, tying it into the, the sports complex and Butler out there, following some areas where we can have some scenery and we have actual wide, rideaway wide enough to accommodate a 10-foot wide multi-use path.
So, and once we complete this, looks like three-quarter mile of bike path, how many, how long is our whole bike path wrapped, do you know?
It will be right close to a little over seven miles, if I recall that correctly. Now, when you take account, this is in our full map, because we, we've added some self-funded projects and we've talked to KDOT a lot about that, like, you know, we built bike path on North Main, we've, we've built a section of bike path already on Tuwanda Avenue here when we did that, made that widen up. When you start tying into some of the wildlife and parks out in the state park, it's quite a few miles when you tie the whole system together.
Thank you.
Is this going through the Dog Park?
It'll go through and along, I mean, we don't really have a, for sure this is where it's going to be yet. I mean, this is very, this is conceptual, this was the submit a project, submit an idea, concept to KDOT. The surveying's been done, well, I take, we surveyed a number of years ago along the Walnut River to kind of find an area shelf down there that would, if it could even be possible, and we found that. But there hasn't been a lot of detail work done yet.
Thank you, Scott. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
I think it's great. Thank you.
All right, entertain a motion.
I move to authorize the city manager and commission to sign the KDOT project programming request for the bicycle pedestrian path, phase three.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second and to approve the bicycle path, Phase Three. Any further comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Be, that'll be a great addition to the bike path. All right, next we have on our agenda the vacation of alley in the Riverside addition.
We have a alley north of 10th Avenue that is no longer utilized as an alley, and we have had a request from adjacent property owners to have you all consider vacating that and reverting it to a permanent utility easement. You can see the area, the request for the vacation is highlighted in yellow. We've spoke to all the utility companies, they have no issue with it.
This is only about the request of the property owners to vacate the alley?
Yeah, yeah.
And is there any specific reason why they, they just...
You know, I, I think it helps, it helps with them in, in future plans for setbacks. That's one of the reasons, but functionally it doesn't act as an alley. Lots of old areas of town were platted with alleys and never utilized as a public alley or rideaway, utilized more in function as a utility easement.
So what is from 11th to 12th?
There is, you can see the, the dentist office up there at 12th Avenue uses the alley for entrance to his business, and then there is a garage there as well that has a rear entrance north, so we do not want to vacate that portion of alley, it's utilized by the adjacent landowners as a, as a in and out to the properties.
Okay. Any further question or comment from the commission? I'd entertain a motion.
Number, please.
Ordinance number G1265, and this will be a roll call.
G1265, correct?
Yes.
I move that ordinance number G1265, an ordinance relating to and providing for the vacation of a certain alley in block nine of Riverside addition to the city of El Dorado, Kansas be approved.
Second.
Okay, it's been approved and seconded. Any further comment? Roll call?
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Beans?
Yes. All right, thank you. Item 14 on our agenda would be sou... Item fourteen on our agenda would be salary schedule. This is a, this is kind of a housekeeping thing, am I right, David?
Yeah.
We talked about some of these, maybe not quite to this minutia that we see here today, but we talked about it in our budget sessions, and this is the, this is the employee classification schedule to be, to be considered, and it needs to be approved as to match up with our budget. So, anybody have any chance to look at this, any questions or comments or discussion or want to have over this? David, you want to add any explanation that you may want?
Based upon our budget discussions and other vacant positions that have not been filled for an extended period of time, the proposed pay plan classification is presented as follows. The positions that are crossed out are being removed from the 2018 pay plan, classifications that are in red but are not crossed out are either changes to the existing title for an existing position, or new titles, new positions that are being added to that. There are some things that we are streamlining, if you will, so for example, you'll notice if you find any administrative assistant positions, those used to refer to, for example, city manager's office administrative assistant, we're removing all of those specifics, and now that position will just be administrative assistant, but it'll be classified in different departments. So it'll be the same position, just will apply to different departments. So you'll see that in different positions like plant, water treatment plant operator three, we are removing water treatments, it'll be plant operator three, which will apply to the water plant and sewer plant, so different things like that. There will presumably be additional changes for the 2019 pay plan classification, but this one only applies to the eighteen year, which will align our positions up with what is mentioned and discussed in the 2018 budget.
We did find one mistake this evening, the engineering A three should be engineering technician, not A. So it should just say engineering technician and no number up.
Any questions or comments?
Since we had an interim fire chief while this was going on, is there any way we could bump the basic rate of the firemen to match that of the basic rate of the patrolman? So our first responders would be paid the same?
Right, so that's a real good question. If you notice in the pay plan, it looks as if firefighters are actually paid less than patrol officers, that is actually correct per hour, however, police officers work an eighty-hour pay week, firefighters work ninety-six to one hundred and twenty hours, depending on when their shift falls in the calendar, so they actually receive or are paid approximately the same as a police officer based upon their total hours, but they do have an hour, a lower hourly rate because of that.
I just want to retain that personnel.
Right.
Yep, good question. Okay. Any other questions or comments? I entertain a motion.
The resolution number is twenty-eight fifty-three.
I move to approve resolution number two-eight-five-three, a resolution amending resolution number two-eight-three-one, which established 2018 salaries and wages, paid to various employees of the city of El Dorado, and allocated the various funds of said city, charges and debits for the payment of compensation of wages of all city officials and employees.
Second.
Okay, so we've been seconded, any further comments? Discussion? Is this not a roll call? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yep.
Okay, next item on our agenda would be commission and advisory board updates.
I'll start. CBB has not met. Parks and Rec meets is coming Wednesday. Airport advisory has met. The fly-in was quite a success this year. There were sixty kids that got to take an airplane ride. We had five pilots that were providing those rides, and so all sixty of them got to ride. Also have a couple of businesses that are talking to Caleb and Brad about possibly locating at the airport, but that's all it is right now, it's just in the talking stage.
Okay.
Andrew, what is that thing in North Main Park? At the Eagle Scout belt, what is it?
Gaga pit. The Gaga ball?
It's what?
The Gaga ball?
Gaga ball, yeah.
It was a, it was a, an Eagle Scout project done by Kyle Huffman and his troop. They raised the money to put it in, and it's a, it's kind of like dodgeball, sort of, but you stand in this pit and you stand in the circle and you throw the ball, and it has to bounce and hit you or you have to catch it. You should look at the YouTube video, it's interesting, but that, this is our first one, and we agreed to let him, the park director, agreed to let him put it in, and he paid for it, and so we're going to see if it's something that people like, and if it is, we'll work towards putting in others, maybe in other parks, and maybe an ADA one as well.
The reason why I asked is I've got a lot of people ask me what it was.
Yeah, there was a new, there was an article in the newspaper about it, and probably I would imagine soon that we'll get some people to go play it so that we can take some pictures and do some advertising ourselves, so.
What's it called?
Gaga dodgeball.
Do what?
It's called Gaga dodgeball. So, in essence, it is dodgeball, but you can't hit anybody above the knees, so you have to, you have to be able to play like this, and you have to catch the ball or it has to be your hand and you're not out, but if it touches your body, you're out.
So it's for young people?
It's for any age. It's extremely popular, it's extremely popular in Boy Scouts, they're being constructed in Boy Scout camps throughout the country right now, and I can tell you for a fact that once troops or packs arrive at Boy Scout camp, from the moment they arrive to the moment they leave, the Gaga dodgeball pit is never empty.
Aren't Boy Scouts young people?
Sure, but they just play if they want, I mean, anyone can play. That's kind of the nice thing, because it is, it is low and you're not actually hurling a ball at someone, it's basically an equal, it's an equal playing field, no one's going to get, you know, a dodgeball mark on their forehead, so it takes out the force and it makes it more of a game that anyone can play of any ability.
Not like the dodgeball we grew up playing.
Sounds like when they get hit in the face.
That was.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Nick, do you have any report to mention?
Prairie Trails hadn't had a meeting, and I have nothing else.
Inc's meeting is this week, and I don't have anything to report.
I'd just say real quick, I had my last sports authority meeting, so you'll need to be thinking, that's, the next meeting's beginning of January, I think Ray was going to reach out. They were, we were trying to figure out how quick that needed to move, but.
Wouldn't be till January when we have new, I don't think, we'd have new commission seat, and we've got a lot of, I think that's even coming up on a work session, is talking about our advisory boards and kind of the, kind of get a handle on how many we have and what they're doing for us, so that's.
The only other one I would encourage you all to maybe think about, I know whoever comes in, so I mean, Matt comes in to this position, but someone will have to take over youth commission in January, and that's a little bit more of a commitment, it's every other Monday night, and so, just if someone has interest or wants to know more from my perspective, I'd be happy to talk about it.
Okay.
It's a good group.
Okay.
That's all.
Yeah, we are going to need to find the, come January, we've got all that to redo.
I was just looking down at that teacher, but, again, if anyone has questions, they can talk to me about it. And with that, I'll also say with youth commission, this is a very young group, and we've talked about trying to work with them on finding a project, giving them the right to find their own project is probably not the best direction.
Yeah.
So if we maybe keep in the back of our mind something we think that they can be involved with, they're more than willing, they're a great group and would do a good job, but we probably need to keep that in the back of our mind.
Okay. Thank you. All right, as far as reports, REAP is, it's an ongoing deal, we're going through strategic planning, it's what I've spent some time outside of city commission doing, Min Inc. comes up, there's a meeting this week, I don't have any reports necessarily beyond that. I would like to bring up a topic, though, I know this is the right place to do it, we've had some inquiries about property acquisition come into the city, as I understand in your last report. Can you remind us, or can we get reminded on what the current policy is and what kind of, I think, I think as those come in, I'm glad people are interested in the properties that the city is holding, but in my opinion, we need to be pretty transparent about, about how those get sold, advertised, I don't, I don't think it's just somebody brought in a, a letter and said, we'd like to buy this and we move forward, I think we really need to be very transparent about that, so, do we have a policy in place on disposal of land, or can, or can we maybe add that to our upcoming work session about giving the specific direction on how we want that done, or several modes to do that?
We had talked to the commission prior, well, a few minutes ago about a land disposal policy, specifically as it pertains to properties that we acquire with vacant property that needs to be demolished. At the time, staff's recommendation was to not necessarily develop a specific policy, but to go on a case-by-case basis, depending on, you know, kind of what the market requires or whatnot, but we're more than happy to look at the problem again and develop a proposal. If the commission desires to do so, there are a number of different ways to do that. We could do, for example, like market property, such as, not necessarily hiring a real estate agent, but having a listing on our website, plus you, and, you know, saying that a property's worth X, and then people can make offers or counter offers, or we could do, we could just declare a day after we accumulate so many properties and do an auction, or some type of closed bidding process, so there are a number of different ways that we can address that, depending on what the commission, what their goals are, which are all's goals are, and how you want to proceed.
Well, I think I'd like to see that on an upcoming work session agenda to talk about. Maybe we see some, some options in terms of what that policy could look like, if we're going to, we've talked quite a bit lately about, you know, selling a lot of those vacant lots that we've got scattered around town, come up with a good transparent way of doing that. So, that's all I have, thank you.
As it relates to any, any existing proposals, how do you wish to proceed?
Why, if we've got any in hand, I think we'd pause until we have a chance to collectively see what direction we want to send, want to go.
We've got some proposals in hand now?
Well, I believe the one that we had discussed last was the farmer's market building.
Again, I don't want to wait around, I don't want to, let's get it done and figure out what we're going to do, because I don't want to quit our sale. So, if we're going to do it, let's do it.
Or we can have that discussion tonight, right now, if you want.
Well, if you want to do it in a work session, but whenever our next work session is, I think we ought to get it figured out and not.
We'd have to make a final decision in here if we did a work session, huh?
I think we can give directions, it's not, we're not acting on anything necessarily on that, are we? Just giving direction on, on how we want to advertise the property and deal with it? Can do that on a work session, we can make decisions in work sessions. So, do we, which one, when's the next one we have coming up?
November first.
It's two weeks away.
Those lines that run like ground and property out there, in between the greenhouse, those dead, they're laid on the ground. I drove, I, we drove out there, there's lines in between the greenhouse and the ground there, they're down on the fence along in there, I thought they were.
They're like big sixteen-inch lines and laying on the fence?
Yeah, they're laying all the way down.
There's some of it that's exposed above ground down in the flood plain, kind of area constantly creep.
I was just, I was meaning to ask you about that, because we drove out there by the Flat Hills, I'm out there and behind there, they're down on the fence.
So we can add that to, do we have a full agenda on the November first meeting, or do we?
We can, we can put it up there, we can get a schedule for that. I mean, I think it's important we do, because we do have a proposal on this property, that came in, let's see, if I recall correctly, that letter was dated September nineteenth, the commission discussed it, the direction that I was kind of given was that we were going to go ahead and proceed with that, so I've communicated that to him, so I'm going to have to communicate to him that we're going to call timeout, rediscover it. We do not have a contract yet prepared, so the contract's not pending, the property's not pending under contract yet, but there was a communication that was provided that we're preparing that contract, you will receive it from us forthwith.
Well, now, if, I don't want to, if we've, if we've made a commitment, if you've conveyed to him that we're drawing up a contract, I don't want to, I don't want to go, you know.
I don't want to go back on our word.
Reneg on our word, like Vince said, but.
Do we, kind of got ourselves into a pickle, because we did have that discussion, we did talk about the desire to sell that property, it was an opportunity to sell that property, but in my mind, as I think about that, I think we need to be very, very transparent about doing that. And that, as I thought that through, it occurred to me that we didn't advertise, we just took somebody's offer, rather than, what if there's somebody else who's got an interest in that building and didn't know it was for sale?
Yeah, I mean, that's correct, we had an offer come in the door, and that offer was brought to you all, so that is correct, we did not solicit bids or offers for that property specifically. In fact, at the time, we weren't actually, the property was not listed per se for sale, so yes, you're correct in that regard.
And in my mind, it certainly called the question, and we agreed then that it was all timed, a good opportunity to sell it, but in retrospect, I mean, I don't want to, we've gone down this path far enough that we can't turn around, then so be it, but in retrospect, I think we need to get a handle on the policy that, for property disposal. I don't know, Ashlyn, have we gone down a road we can't back up on, and I, and I don't, I don't want to, like you said, I don't want to reneg on any kind of implied deal that we've got either.
September twenty-seventh, the commission did agree to accept an offer that was made for the community market. Those types of agreements, especially when it deals with real estate, have to be in writing, so in terms of that, you know, we don't have anything in writing right now, that I understand, that I'm aware of.
But if we've got minutes that said we accepted an offer.
An offer has been accepted by the commission.
I think we moved forward with that.
I agree.
Because I don't, I think we moved forward with that, but from this point forward, we need to be very open about how we're doing that, and let's add it to our upcoming agenda to talk about the other properties we have that we've decided we'd like to dispose of. Okay?
Okay.
Everybody agree with that, it's okay with that? All right, thank you, I don't have anything else. It's time for the city manager to report.
Cool. In my. In my, my weekly update, you have, well, may have noticed a schnitzel fest, so one of our very own firefighters, Tony Yajin, he is proposing to do a pilot, kind of pilot project, if you will, whereby we want to do a reservation, by reservation only, well, I guess reservation we're also going to take at the front door for the day of, but anyway, do some buffet events at Prairie Trails, some one-time planned events that you can get a reservation for, or again, you can pay at the door, but the intent is that we'll have it scheduled, we'll market it really well ahead of time, and try to get some, some, what's the word I'm looking for? It's right there on the edge of my tongue. Anyway, some folks out there at a food event, and then if it's successful, we can, we can kind of build upon that, maybe have a couple of months in a row, and then begin to have maybe two a month or three a month, and then eventually play into men's and women's nights in the spring of next year. So we have all the equipment that we need, and it's just a matter of kind of getting someone out there that can cook and that can make that happen, so we thought we'd play around with, with a pilot, and the schnitzel fest was kind of the first, first experiment, if you will. We were going to actually partner with Walnut River Brewing Company, but the date that we had wasn't going to work for them, and so we're kind of back to the drawing board to find a date that'll work, but just wanted to kind of let you all know that what we're trying to do is create some exposure at Prairie Trails from a kitchen standpoint, with the hope that maybe we could eventually get to a point where we can get enough sales that we can up our, our alcohol permitting out there, and maybe take it to the next level in terms of, of services that we provide, so... Schnitzel Fest is kind of an Oktoberfest thing, schnitzel is a German menu item, it's actually a pork fritter that's deep fat fried, and then it's served with a number of different sauces. They're authentic German style sauces. They have different names that I don't know exactly without having the menu in front of me, but it's kind of an authentic German meal, and it would be a buffet style, and then the idea would be that we would also partner with, for example, Walnut Brewing Company or, or some other establishment to provide alcohol, and it would kind of be a, kind of just an experience, again, to get people out there to kind of see that. One of the challenges we've had with Prairie Trails and food is that there's been inconsistent hours, but if you look at, there are cases in the state of Kansas where there's kind of a, whether it be an airport or a restaurant out in the middle of nowhere, and they say, you know, "We're going to serve this, this food menu on this specific day at this specific time," and they have hundreds of people show up. So I think it's, how do we get that exposure, how do we get that marketing, and then we can build on that with the idea that in the spring, we can really have some pretty cool events out there. So that's coming soon to a theater near you, or rather, a golf course near you, so stay tuned for that. In addition to that, Prairie Trails, went out there this afternoon with Kevin, they're doing some pretty cool stuff out there. As we mentioned, we had talked about plans to fill in the swimming pool out there, that pool is actually filled in now. Of course, it's, there's no grass yet, but it's been filled in, and they're in the process of removing several trees, some shrubs that just didn't look very good, so they're kind of cleaning it up, they're going to be removing the fence line that's over, that was behind the pool, and the, kind of the pump house, they're just cleaning up a number of different things, again, with the idea that we will be able to kind of expand upon some of the things that we have, the schnitzel fest, but also jumping into the spring, maybe creating a venue outside on that patio and kind of experimenting with some different things. And already, just the small things that they've done, removing some weeds and some growth that has taken place, I mean, it, you can definitely see that there's some potential and some possibilities. The nice thing is that all these improvements are pretty affordable, because the only cost that we have really is labor. We're not having to go out and buy a lot of this stuff, and so we're hoping that in the next couple of weeks, you'll be able to see a pretty good transformation out of Prairie Trails. One of the things that we recently have done with respect to implementation of our Parks Master Plan, the city has under contract the Squire's property located there just south of East Park, and the idea with that, that property fits in with our Park Master Plan, and what we're going to be doing, at least temporarily, once the property closes, will be to relocate some of the park maintenance equipment, particularly those that are stored outside, we'll be able to put it under roof, and there'll be some other things that we can move and store indoors, so short-term, we'll be able to have a benefit there, but then long-term, we'll be able to incorporate the property into our long-range master plan as it relates to East Park, and then with the improvements to the bike and pedestrian trail we just talked about, it'll be an excellent connection with that implementation, so that will, that will sync up with what we're trying to do with the overall Park Master Plan.
Good, thank you.
So that's kind of all I have for now.
I got asked this question, and I don't know if he'd like to do it, but rename Prairie Trails to El Dorado Municipal Golf Course at Prairie Trails. Does it sound like it's a country club, or, or it's actually a municipal golf course?
That's, that's a good idea. I mean, we could definitely take it to the advisory committee and see what they...
I was asked that the other day, but...
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Okay. Any other discussion from the commission? Being none, I have a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Five to zero, we are adjourned, thank you.